Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order again. And at this time, Audrey, we are to item B on the agenda.
Thank you. And thank you for allowing me to have this as a continuance to time served at 10:30 in the morning. I'm going to do a little bit of a prologue for items B through E, and they all relate to the same topic, but they are broken out separately. And then I'm going to ask Councilman McIntosh, who really was instrumental in this work. I mean, I did the transactional documents with Carl Schwing along with other staff members. There was a lot of people working on this. But if I can just do a quick introduction. You have here several different elements. You have a voluntary annexation element. And voluntary annexation is under one statute where it's just by agreement through the property owners. Now, this is a kickoff meeting for all of the annexation. We still have ordinances. So the first two, one is an annexation to the immediate property owner, the next is the property owner right after that, which is Pelican Landing Community Association, are the first two items. And so I do need them to go in that particular order. The third item is an urban services report. Now, as you saw on some of the items, we did have some map reconciliation discussions. On the urban services report, there will be some tweaking after this meeting. We realized it yesterday afternoon. So we will be modifying the referendum area. It's not an area where people are living that we're modifying, but we're adding nine acres into that referendum area that we had in a voluntary annexation, but it was inaccurate in the voluntary annexation. And that was the Pelican Colony area that was WCI until, I believe, January. So we need to move that over. And then, consistent with the referendum, we have two consent documents, both from WCI and Pelican Landing Community Association, which were done in abundance of caution. The agreements, I can be happy to explain each of these agreements individually with you, by individually, as we go through each agenda item. But I think at this time, it'd be more appropriate holistically to have Councilman McIntosh explain the process.
Thank you very much. For counsel and those in the audience, the position of this city and this council has always been, there will be no annexation of any property unless it's voluntarily brought forward to the council. And it's been done in this fashion as well. There's a great deal of emotion, I understand that, and there's a great deal of unintended and some intended misinformation, and we're going to try to set that straight today as best we can. Everything we've done has been transparent and legally correct, and I'm not embarrassed to bring this forward to council. I will show you first, the first two items, 155 and 56, deal with the Marina, Coconut Point Marina, that was brought into Pelican Landing Homeowners Association earlier this year. Shortly after that happened, let me show you where this is on the map. If you look...
Can't do it. Can't do it with the lights.
Is there a dot on here someplace?
Not allowed to touch them.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Can't touch the lights.
The city boundaries for...
Thank you. The city boundaries for the city of Benita Springs were set by the state. They took the fire districts, which were cut in the 1800s. Those took no recognition into historic issues of neighborhoods, cultures, or communities. So if you look at, if you look at the boundaries of Benita Springs through here, the unincorporated portion of Lee County, known as Astero, sort of outlines itself in this fashion right here. We're neighbors, we have sort of a false boundary between us, and frankly, the working relationship has been good between the two communities over the last several years. The areas about which we're talking on these, both, all four of these items, is this piece right here. The piece we're talking about, the first two items, is this piece right here, the second piece is right here. Not a large land area, but critical in terms of if you want to maintain a community at Pelican Landing. Pelican Landing's boundaries sort of flow through here, in this area right here. When the city boundaries were cut, they came right through the top 20 percent of Pelican Landing and cut out of the roughly 3,000 residents in Pelican Landing. Roughly 800 live in this area that's affected right now, and the other 2,200 live down in here. It's worked okay, and it's not perfect by any means, but the issue that we're really going to talk about, secondly, determines this voting right of the people in this area right here. So, on the first two items, shortly after, shortly after the Pelican Landing Association bought, shortly after Pelican Landing Association bought the Coconut Point Marina, I was approached by officials of the organization and some community residents as well, asking, is that in the city? No, it's not. It's part of the county. And how could it become part of the city? The only way that it could become part of the city voluntarily is for it to be contiguous with the city limits, which... Oops, sorry. There we go. This is the blown-up portion of that. If you look, if this is the city limit, right through here, right through here, this is where the Coconut Point Marina was. This piece of preserved property was owned by WCI. And that's not, that piece of property is a sensitive area. It's a preserve. It has to be maintained. It has to be protected in ways that I believe the city will do very well. But in order for that to happen, I said, you've got to have this piece of property contiguous with the city limits, in order to bring this in. Following several conversations with, between city officials of WCI, the Pelican Landing Homeowners Association, the attorneys went to work for all three of those organizations, and they have come to an agreement, in these two consent agreements you're going to see. First, the WCI has agreed that this piece of, this portion of property, in the blue, will, they have agreed to bring that into the city limits. That makes that piece of property that was already contiguous with the city limit contiguous with the Coconut Point property. This morning at 9:00 at the Board of Directors meeting of the PLCA, as Mr. Betts mentioned in his comments, the Board unanimously voted to accept the agreement, which allows this portion of the county to come into the city because it is contiguous now with this county city line. This is a voluntary annexation. We've been upfront with this thing. It's fairly new, but it's not anything that was tried to be hidden. The city officials have done the right things in making this thing happen. It's a request of the people in Pelican Landing and with WCI. If there are questions about the, from the council on those conversations, I wasn't privy to them, but I know officials in the city were privy to the WCI, were part of the WCI and the PLCA conversation. So when Audrey gives you her official reading of these two proposals to take forward, you can rest assured that all the people that are involved in this have been contacted, voted, and have agreed that this is the best way to protect that asset for Pelican Landing and for us to protect that preserved portion that was, did belong to WCI. So I'll try to answer any questions for the council.
Okay. All right.
It's complicated, so I have...
Well, yeah. And why don't we take this a bite at a time, as you had, and we'll take care of B and C here first. I think you've explained that quite well. Counsel, do you have any questions so far as the proposals of B and C, which is the WCI voluntary annexation, or C, the Pelican Landing community, the smaller annexation, for Audrey or for Steve? Any questions? Martha?
I did, through reading the document and the recitals, findings of fact, all that good stuff, in there, it said that, of course, they'll have their vested rights. I talked to John Dolmer and Mike Kirby. On the WCI property, we've got eagles, so that the eagles will be monitored. And I just, in understanding how the LD, the land development code will be applied, I am not sure if I understood their answer, but if, you know me, the shielded lights, the code that's upgraded from the county code, if we cannot require them to do that, that maybe we ask them if they could, very simple thing, I'm not asking about big expensive stuff, that just the upgrading to the city code from the county code in that area, if that would be possible. It's, you know, it's on, it's right near Astero Bay, shielded lights instead of exposed lights, you know, that kind of stuff, so...
Yeah, I think at this point in time, I'm going to try to answer for Audrey here. Thank you. It's a reciprocal relationship we have. We both answer each other's questions sometimes. But I think that the basic answer is, is that the agreement lays out the framework to where the codes that they're under apply now, but it is a big picture item, Martha.
Yes.
And if there are, if there are things, there are voluntary agreements that we can come to, I'm sure that that's quite possible.
Yeah, and, of course...
But then again, I don't think it really has anything to do with this agreement.
Well, it does, because it mentions what happens in land development code and how that applies. This agreement would be an opportunity...
But you can't insert anything into the agreement that says, will you do something that we ask you to in the future?
Oh, no, no, no. No, we can't force them to do that, of course.
Then it doesn't pertain to the contract. Audrey?
That's why it's an agreement.
If I may, if I may, and it's, again, we're not going to do contract zoning here, but what we are going to do is protect vested rights. And that was WCI's main concern, is quite frankly, coming in, they do have a DRI, and as council is aware, when you have a development of regional impact, and I'm sorry for using acronyms, a development of regional impact, they have spent a lot of money, where your normal burden of proof for a normal zoning case, and council remembers that, or some of the council members may recall that, they have other relief mechanisms, like going to governor and cabinet if there's something where we aren't following something consistent with the, sorry, with their DRI. So, I mean, we can try, and again, we're fortunate that, in this particular circumstance, the DRI, they're going to want to mirror what they've done in the city already. So it's not, I mean, this is 20 percent...
Well, that's very comforting, I hope that's...
So I think that it is something that you will find a lot of mirroring between the two. I'm sure they're not going to want to build something that's not compatible in the two jurisdictions. But they do want to protect their rights, and I think that is admirable and something important, because they are coming over voluntarily.
Absolutely. Sure. And I wouldn't want to take their rights away. It's an agreement, it's an opportunity. So I just hope the more upgraded code that we have in Benita over Lee County, maybe we can come to some understanding that way. Thank you, Ms. Montgomery, for being here.
As far as the dark skies. And let me just point out something else to counsel. When we adopted our comprehensive plan, one of the things that we focused on that's not a Lee County issue is height of buildings. And we have actual height of buildings in our comprehensive plan. And we talk about it in the comprehensive plan, protecting the ones that had come in at time of incorporation. But we did not have language saying, protecting at time of annexation. So those are things that they wanted to make sure the annexation agreement covered, that we're not going to say, aha, we tricked you, we have this, you know, it was only incorporated documents, not annexated, or annexated areas, so now your buildings can't be built. That, I mean, that would probably be terrible if the city did that. So the city did put language, and the city agreed to that type of language in this agreement. And it's a very complicated agreement, and I'm sorry you got it through the errata sheet, but I believe it summarized, those points are summarized in the green sheet. So we will have comp plan amendments that are part of this, which will necessitate public hearings. We will have also other hearings. This is only the first step of the voluntary annexation. We will be taking it back to council August 7th and August 21st for public hearings, at which time the public will be able to articulate their positions on the voluntary annexation, because it's an ordinance, and like any ordinance, the public has a right to be heard.
Mayor, we've kind of, well, when they come into this agreement, there was something written here about the eagles nest, and I know we have several out there. So will they be following what the buffer zone was under the Lee County code, just like they are following all the LDC under the Lee County code? Will that be changing to the city code?
They'll be following their DRI development order as is the buffers unless they ask for a change.
Thank you. That's all I need to know.
Good, good. Okay. Counsel, any other questions?
I'll move to take this forward.
There's a motion to approve the annexation agreement with WCI, and there's a second.
This is WCI?
WCI.
Okay, WCI?
Yep, WCI agreement. And there's a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Okay, item C now has to do with the Pelican Landing Community Association's annexation.
I'll move to push, take that forward as well.
We have a motion to forward and a second. Any discussion or questions for staff? Roll call.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, item D. Steve, did you have a preface for that, or?
Did you want to?
I'd like to start. And this is probably more Carl Schwing than I, but I'm going to start, and this is the urban services report. Now, we did voluntary annexations. The next is annexation by referendum, which is different than the voluntary annexations because you do need to go out to a vote, and there's other steps and other requirements. And the statute requires what's called an urban services report to be prepared by the city to kick it off, and to send that over to the Board of County Commissioners. Now, I want to point out that, as I mentioned in the earlier green sheets, we had a map reconciliation with the voluntary annexation with WCI. Well, that relates to this also. So we will be amending this before we send it over to the Board of County Commissioners as to the additional nine acres to be added back into the referendum area. There are no voters in that nine acres, but it needs to be added into that particular area. That's a housekeeping item. The, it follows the statute. If you want me to talk about a statute, I would be willing to do so, but I guess I would probably bore everybody. So at this point, I'll allow Carl.
That's a good guess.
Final point is, there's also a timeline. So I know that I had seen some comments that people are rushing this, it's this great thing. If you look at it, it doesn't really happen until March. This is like a kickoff of a starting, but the actual election is not till either February or March, and these dates are flexible. They can move, you know, two weeks here and there, four weeks here and there. But these are the things to start the process.
Okay, Carl?
I really don't have anything further, Mayor. The urban services report was put together. We believe it meets statutory requirements. It will be submitted to the county, as Audrey indicated, and that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Was there a motion to approve the urban services?
Motion to approve the urban services report.
We have a motion and a second, and either comment. Yes, go ahead, Pete.
Audrey, you said no voters. Are there any people there?
No.
In the nine acres?
Yeah.
I think it's just woods, so I hope, if there's people, that's a different issue, not related to people who are supposed to be...
Just make it clear. Awesome. Thank you.
That might be seeing Ms. Montgomery a different way.
Okay, good. We have a motion and a second. Any other comment?
Mayor?
Discussion? Yes?
You know, I won't be here on this council when this vote gets taken forward. I would like, sometime, and I don't know if this is appropriate, Mayor, to be able to maybe just give a little history real quick of that stretch of the area, because we heard today that it was in the community of Astero. Would that be appropriate? May I do that for just real quick and very gently?
No.
Why don't we wait until we get done with the business, and then if you'd like to do something like that?
During council member items.
During the council member items, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Okay. A motion and a second, and roll call.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, and item E, approve the two consents to annex within WCI communities. Yes. Audrey, would you like to do a preface to that first?
I'll do a kickoff on this one, too. And again, with the referendum area, there is in the particular statutes, some language that when you're dealing with an area where you have voters, you have people who are not voters, you have property owners, there is a rule that says if 70 percent of the area is owned by people who are not resident voters, you have to get 50 percent of that 70 percent. And there are things that the Attorney General has determined you can exclude from that, such as like the county road that runs through it, or the CDD. We went, we did the calculations, we did them independently, and we actually came up with pretty much the same number. So very impressed with the mathematics of both staff. And, because I wasn't expecting to do math at that level, and I want to say that we do not, it doesn't fall within that 70 percent threshold, but in abundance of caution, we wanted to make sure the major landowners agree with going forward. And of course, the two major landowners is WCI and Pelican Landing Community Association. And so we have requests for consent, and they have signed off on it.
Okay. And counsel, do you have any questions? Carl, you anything to add?
Just for clarification, their consent is just to consent to go to a vote, get us to a vote?
Right.
Of the people in that area. All right.
Okay, yes, go right ahead.
Just to follow up, this, the map you see here, once again, of Benita area and Astero county area, this is the portion of land in the yellow hatchmarks that we're talking about. Pelican Landing is this piece right here. So what we're saying is, when, when vote Astero came out early and said that they, they were talking about incorporation once again, I had people from that area who, including Ms. Ross, who spoke today, say, am I part of Benita Springs or am I not? And frankly, no, you're not. You're still part of Lee County. Well, I'd like to be, you know, among other people. She said, I'd like, I want to make sure I'm in Benita Springs. She said that today. We've had several people ask the question. This is not, this is not the referendum itself. This simply says that the law says, if 70 percent of land is owned by non-resident voters, those people, typically commercial property people, have to give the okay to vote. All this has said is, yes, you can hold a vote as residents. It doesn't say, we're annexing you. It doesn't say anything like that. That was made clear in February when I spoke to the council and asked them to give us permission to go to the city staff to bring this forward, to see what we could do. I've said it to Astero council community leaders every time we've met. We don't always agree on that, but I've been very straightforward where we are on it. If there's a referendum for incorporation by vote Astero, the people who live in this portion of Pelican Landing right here will only have two options. The first option is to become part of the city of Astero, or just, or to remain a portion of an incorporated Lee County. That's the only two options they have. Even though they have a Benita Springs address, they can't vote to become part of Benita Springs. That requires another ballot vote. That's why we're saying, we had to have that approval by the 70 percent of the landowners here to hold a vote, which will be done by mail more than likely in the height of season, February and March, when we have the most people here, making sure that we have as many voters as possible to answer this question. And if they, you know, as a person of DIUS, I'm neutral, whether they come in or don't, that's up to them. As a member of Pelican Landing, I think it's, it's important that you have several unique neighborhoods inside, but it's one community. So to have two municipal governments, two sets of standards, two sets of ordinances, doesn't make a great deal of sense to me, and it doesn't appear very efficient. But saying no, not allowing those people to vote, is the wrong thing. And if we don't allow them to vote, then we violated the rules of democracy and self-determination. And that's what we're at, that's where we, that's where we are today. Democracy and self-determination. And that's what we're, what's in front of us, and I'm going to make the motion that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the two consents to annex from WCI communities and Pelican Landing. Community, is there any other questions, comments? Anything else, staff? Roll call, please.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just one more thing. I want to thank city staff. I know this was a lot of pressure to get all these pieces put in place, the residents, the voters in this area, thank you. Carl, Audrey, thank you very much for that work. Thank you.
Good. Audrey, did you, did you want to go ahead and let us know what the next step, just the next step would be in this process?
Well, you have the timeline.
Yes.
And the timeline is probably your best bet. I'm going to need to prepare ordinances. Now, you saw an email I received from Ron Pure the other day, and I answered a question. I said, I don't even know the answer, I'm going to need to ask council the answer, and that is when I'm preparing the ordinance for the referendum. Now, we're just talking the referendum part right now.
I'm just asking you, the next step in this process would be?
Okay, for voluntary annexations, I'll be preparing the ordinances, and you have a petition to review, and you'll have the ordinances to review.
And that would be brought forward as an ordinance?
Correct.
And there'll be a first reading? And then a second reading, okay? And you believe that'll progress along within the next few months, we'll say?
Yes.
Okay, good. And on the other, there is a more extended?
It's a more extended, and it's statutory, and we will be sending out certain notices, certain requirements that the statutes require, so everybody gets to hear of it, although by now, people have probably heard. We will also be preparing an ordinance. The ordinance is based on the statute, where people will either vote for, you know, calls the ballot language, similar to when we do a charter amendments, you know, how do you want to vote, yes or no, or for or against is actually not yes or no.
Okay.
And we'll have that. We have a lot of scheduling to do, a lot of coordination with the supervisor of elections. Once we have, so it's kind of, I like to put it as three parts. This is our kickoff. The next part will be in the fall, getting all of our mechanical, and then the actual election will be in the spring.
Now, I would ask one thing before we go ahead and move along through the agenda here, that we go ahead and through, through this process, through the remainder of the processes, as we go along, that there's as much information about what kind of timeline, what we have to go through, why we have to go through it, and what the meaning is, because a lot of that might be misconstrued, especially when we start passing the ordinances in regards to the voting area right there. It may have the appearance that, look, they're already annexing in the area, when we're not. We're just preparing the ordinance for that. So let's, let's do as best we can. You've done a great job so far, but keeping that information out there for everybody to see, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, good. Yes?
One thing, just for the record, I'm sorry, I've lost track here for a minute. When it came to the Pelican Landing Association Unit Owners Committee, and that's the neighborhood representatives for the 40 communities, when the issue was brought up about allowing the people in that area to vote, they voted 39 to 1 to allow them to vote. So thank you.
Okay. All right. And, okay, yes?
I just wanted to say briefly, Steve, Councilman McIntosh, great, great job here. You've heard a lot of issues, both sides, pro and con on this, and the reality is, folks, wherever you stand on this issue, and if you're in that area, this is democracy. You're going to have a vote now, and that's all we can ask for. So thank you, Councilman McIntosh, for your leadership. I know it's in your district, but very well, very well handled. Good job.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
I do want to congratulate him, because, you know, I know this has struck a nerve with our neighbors. I think you've gone about, you're the right guy. You know what I mean? You're a gentle, fair-minded man, and you're, you have put this forward in the most transparent transparent manner, and I'm glad, Mayor, that you've asked that that be done. There's no, at least on my part, and I've not seen on the city's part, any force or imposition here. This is simply saying, you get to decide, not me, not you, not the mayor, not any of us up here, you get to decide. And this has been, only thing I can see it as, is an invitation to an opportunity. You know, from 10,000 feet, if you look at our, our communities, we all look pretty much the same, you know? And it only makes sense, if you look at the outline, in my opinion, but, you know, that from 10,000 feet is more efficient, as you said, to be under one plan.
Okay.
Okay. I'll talk about the history at another time, Mayor. But thank you, Councilman McIntosh, for, for being a leader.
Okay, and staff, if it's okay with you, I'm going to go to Mayor and Councilmember Items and Reports. And we will start over there with my good councilman, Councilman Longheart.
Thank you, Ben. Steve, you've really done a thorough job, and for the people in Astero. The most important thing is that the people in that area will have the opportunity to vote. If it wasn't that way, I probably wouldn't support it. But I'm very happy that we worked through this. Staff did a wonderful job. The presentations were very good. And Steve, again, dedication to the job that you did is outstanding. And you filled in some spaces for me that I was not aware of, but now that I've seen everything, great job. And one more thing I have is the library task force was in the, we had a meeting, their budget hearing in the county on Monday.
Twenty dollars.
Oh, yeah, that's another, that's the subject of the hand. I thought the meeting went well, and thank you for the people that were able to attend. The city manager was there, of course, and we listened, and, and for all of the people in Astero and Benita, you're going to face some sort of a tax increase in the coming year at the library level. That looks pretty, pretty sure. But it's not what we did, it's how they handled things. And here in the city, in Astero, obviously, we're probably donor communities in terms of how many tax dollars we send to, to Lee County to manage. But it was a good meeting. They're going to move forward with the, the study, and hopefully, in not-too-distant future, we'll, we'll see something of a, a building or something very positive happen that will make us, perhaps maybe make us closer to equal with Astero, with that beautiful library that you have, that regional library up there. Ours is a little tinier, but it really needs to be, go out into the 21st century. I'm done.
Keep swinging away at it, Bill. All right. Thank, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Anything else for us today?
No.
Okay. Martha, what do you have for us?
Thank you, and Mayor, thanks for letting me have a few minutes here. I know, again, that this has struck a nerve with our neighbors, some of our neighbors there, and others, not so much. But the area that we're talking about for this vote, and also the area where we have this voluntary annexation as well, historically, since the 1880s, has been grouped with Benita Springs. It was part of the original Comer purchase that went up to that section, which is divided down the middle of Coconut Road. And then, if you look later on in the 1890s, at the Corishans, their, their purchases went kind of down to Williams Road. And then there's no man's land, Coconut, in between. And I remember, Ben, you probably remember this way back when, but there used to be a sign at the, reflecting this association between Astero and the Corishans, because the Corishans incorporated Astero in 1904. That connection has always been there for Astero, in their, in their history, their historical remnants there, the state park that's there, and the sign that used to be at Corkscrewen 41 that said, "Welcome to Astero." So Astero was a huge place at the time. Benita was only small. But we were associated all the way up through Coconut. The First Baptist Church of Benita Springs had a church out on Coconut at the Weeks Fish Camp. Two county commissioners from Benita Springs, we actually had single-member districts up until the 70s, came from Benita Springs. They lived on Coconut Road. Will Gibson, AM Smith, who also used to be on our first city council here in Benita Springs. The Benita Springs Elks Club is on Coconut Road, still there. Benita Springs Utilities is on Coconut Road. Coconut Road has always been considered, even in that first Comer plantation purpose, purchase, which was south of Benita Beach Road, up to that section line, always a part of our community. The children that lived there, Ask the Weeks, they went to our school, they went to our churches, they were involved in the Benita Library, they were involved in all the efforts. They, they were part of our Fourth of July celebration that's coming up, that for years and years celebrated being a part of our community. So, you know, when I moved here in the 80s, people always told me, "I live in North Benita." Well, some people don't want it to be in Benita who are here. Call it not Benita, whichever, we call it no Bo, not Benita, North Benita. Soho, no Bo. But, you know, this is not intended in any way, as you know, gentlemen, to poke you in the eye or anything like that. This is, from, for me, from above, again, 10,000 feet, to any outsider, we have, we're full of emotion here maybe about this, because we consider it part of our community for so many years, and, and for so many years now, you're considering it part of your community. You know, we're like the teenage girls fighting over a sweater. My sisters and I used to do that. But from an outside observer, you can't rip the sweater in half, and it's going to serve somebody. Those people who live there will be able to do that. So with all that said, I'm sure I'm not going to change the minds of the, the gentlemen who we've worked for over the years, who have come here to represent their port of view, but, you know, you're not going to get to decide that, I'm not going to get to decide that. The city cannot advocate, you know, spend money to advocate. Of course, we can advocate a position as individual council members, as a city council when we vote, but we can't spend money to do all that lobbying and stuff. So, you know, I just wanted to say, and use my voice in the only way that I can, to say, you know, that area has always been part of Benita Springs. I talked to David Crawford yesterday. He used to work for WCI when that development was coming through at the county level, and he said, "You know, Martha," he lives up that way. He said, you know, he also works for the RPC, so he's been in the private and the public sector for many years as a planner. And he said, "We tried the darndest in WCI to get that Astero fire district line moved up to Coconut Road." And he said, "You know, they just didn't want to budge." You know how fire districts are, no offense, fire districts, but they just didn't want to lose that, because we know all of that area was part of Benita Springs. And I said, "Well, that's nice of you to say, but it didn't work, did it?" He goes, "Yeah, now they consider that as part of Astero." But we all knew it was part of Benita, and we tried to get it into, this was before city incorporation, so I'm just going to wrap it up. We got a smaller, more efficient government, you're going to get local representation, you've got, you know, you don't have to drive 25 miles, go talk to your commissioner, make a meeting. Benita Springs, welcome home. So anyhow, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pete, what do you got for us?
Yeah, good morning, everybody. I'd like to turn your attention up to the screen here just for a minute, if you will. A few months back, I had a call from a friend who said, "Councilman Simmons, could you take a look at a piece of property for me?" I said, "Oh, I'd be happy." So I drove out there and looked at it, and, oh, okay. Looks kind of unkept, but you know, when you're driving down the road, this is on Benita Beach Road, out towards 75, near Home Depot on the south side of the road. So I contacted Carl, who in turn contacted code enforcement, and I just want to give a big kudos and thumbs up for that property. I'm not sure if we can show the before and after, but, John, I know you probably have a few comments on this, but what this amounted to was just a phone call from a friend of mine, saying, "You know, I'm not sure what's going on with that piece of property, but it looks pretty unkept. Can you see what you can do about it?" So like I said, I contacted Carl, we, who contacted code enforcement, who contacted the person that owned the piece of property, who on their own improved the piece of land. And I'd like to hear your thoughts on that, John.
Chris Campbell and, and his entire staff has been really successful in doing outreach with property owners about situations that may or may not pose technical violations. Obviously, it's a different situation when they do that, but even in situations where the property is maybe not kept up to a standard that we would like to see, and getting the property owners to voluntarily take affirmative action, not necessarily as a result of some kind of citation, but just because they're, now it's brought to their attention. And we do have property owners that care about what the community looks like, want to do the right thing, and, and Chris has found that he and his folks have been able to establish that kind of an outreach attitude and get great results. This is an example of that, and it's one of many along that whole strip, where they've been able to, at various levels, go in and get things cleaned up. Sometimes, because there are actual violations and, and issues that we are concerned about, we had some situations with homeless people at one point, but they've, they've been very successful in getting that kind of response from property owners. And obviously, that's the kind of thing that then grows upon itself. As one property improves, it's more likely that some of the neighbors will. And together, we're seeing an improvement in a lot of different areas around the city on just those kinds of things, where exotics are being taken out, property owners are investing in beautification efforts, all to the benefit of the community at large.
Right, right. Thank you very much, everybody, for your involvement with this, and quite frankly, the leadership and the, the property owner. Thank you very much for voluntarily cleaning this up, and I would just like to encourage other property owners around town. Hey, you know, to, to say the pride in Benita Springs is higher than it's ever been would probably be a misstatement, because the pride of Benita Springs has always been high. But as we continue and as we advance and as we move forward here, I would just encourage property owners to look at those before and after pictures. Think about, quite frankly, if you need to be selfish about it, what it does for the value of your property, if you can look at it any other way, whatever it might take. Let's keep Benita beautiful, and thank you very much for this. I sincerely appreciate that.
Thanks.
Once again, Councilman McIntosh, thank you for your leadership. This issue is moving forward, and we'll let the voters decide.
Thank you, Pete.
Very much.
Thank you, Pete. Steve?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
What do you have?
I walked away from the commissioners' workshop on Monday with a positive feeling, and I want to thank you, Bill, for your dedication, devotion to the library task force. You've been right on top of things.
Stephen, what a great job you did in terms of your presentation. It was very clear, and I just want to say that when you used the word transparency, that meant a lot to me, because now I know that there's a voluntary movement in, to be, to want to be incorporated. So thank you so much for your dedication also in this process. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Janet?
Everyone's saying thank you, so I will too. Thank you so much. Glad to be back. Just want to remind everybody, July 4th is coming up, and it's going to be a fun-filled day here in Benita Springs, starting bright and early in the morning with the Rotary Run. And then it goes into the bed parade, bed race, pardon me, the parade, and then, starting at 4:00 in the afternoon, all the festivities in Riverside Park, and our, at dusk, the laser and fireworks show. So you can spend the whole day here downtown, and it's going to be a blast. So I hope to see everybody out and about, because I'm looking forward to the parade and all the other activities. Thank you.
Good. Councilman McIntosh, Dr. McIntosh?
Thank you so much. Congratulations to Councilman Slacta on being elected to a statewide American Legion post position, again, on his way to being Florida President of the American Legion Association. Thank you for that dedication. And congratulations to Benita Springs Utilities. Senator Richter was at the meeting two weeks ago when I attended, and he complimented BSU on their fiscal responsibility and the, the environmental responsibility they'd taken. So congratulations, Benita Springs Utility, on another very, very successful year, and congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome. Council, would you like to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Move to approve the minutes, second. Any other discussion?
Did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I do not. Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Okay. I'm really swinging away here. At this time, we'll take public comment on any item. Please, anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward.
Yes, Rick Steinmeier, I appreciate the council's decision to grant the Historical Society some, some tokens of appreciation in the form of alms, I guess. Without the Historical Society and the people that work with and for the Historical Society, that McSwain House would be just another vacant piece of property. When it was given to them, I didn't realize that it needed a new foundation, which has been done, and now we can move forward with a nice old house on Old 41 that'll improve the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. That's all right. Everybody can just kind of queue up there if you'd like.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council.
Good afternoon, Don.
I'm Don Eslick. Sorry I couldn't be here earlier before you took these votes. To me, today is the saddest day in eight or nine years of my involvement in South Lee County with the actions that you've started here today, and I realize they're not done. I go back to the 2004, 2005 effort on the part of the city to try to annex after your charter had prohibited it for five years, and you tried to annex all the way up to Williams Road. And in response to that, we created a mail survey, went out to 5,000 registered voters in that area, 30-some percent of which responded, which is very high for a mail survey. 90-some percent said they would definitely vote in a referendum on that matter, and 80-some percent said they're opposed to annexation. As a consequence of that, there was a subsequent public meeting here in this room, I think John Spear and I chaired it, where there was a discussion about this whole matter, and the city indicated they would not annex involuntarily any property in Astero, but would accept some voluntary annexations if any came forward. I view this thing as a subterfuge to try to make it look like there's a voluntary annexation, which merely deprives the voters of the Astero portion of Pelican Landing the right to vote on that matter, on the, on the matters that PLCA Board and WCI have agreed to after various quid pro quos that have been provided them in your agreements. That's, that's just very, very unfortunate. You know, and going back to the beginning of this thing, when Steve got interested and involved in it, kept talking about how vote Astero was a threat to these people, not giving them a chance to become part of Benita Springs if indeed they were first asked to incorporate in Astero. Well, you and I know that it takes about two years at minimum from the time that the legislative group here, the Southwest Florida Legislative Delegation approves a legislative bill to go through the legislature and then hold a referendum. Plenty of time for the city to move ahead on this annexation vote that you're scheduling now for February or March, right? Seven or eight months away. So there was never any real opportunity for us to, you know, incorporate those people without those residents having a voice in the matter as it relates to being a part of Benita Springs. That, to me, was just terribly misleading, and it resulted in some of the actions that have been taken by the Unit Owners Committee and, and the Pelican Landing Board, which is now constituted entirely of Benita residents. They waited until after we had an Astero member of the PLCA Board no longer sitting there. So there's nobody on that board that represents the residents of Astero in Pelican Landing. So it's, I'm very disappointed. I, I hope that at some point in time, you'll come to your senses and, and agree that this ought not to go forward, because I'm afraid it'll, it'll once again return to the kind of bickering and fighting that we had back in 2004 and before over a variety of issues. And this is one of those things, it's just a core matter between the two communities. The area we're talking about is all in Astero, and we've worked awfully hard for the last 13 years to try to serve the people of Astero in a wide variety of ways, in, in addition to having probably the highest development standards of any community in, in Southwest Florida, including Benita Springs. I don't mean that offensively, but the bottom line is that we were, we had a lot of vacant land to be able to develop it, so we didn't have a lot of opposition from existing interests in that thing. So what has, what we're looking at is changing something that's worked for 13 years, since you became a city. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I can assure you that part of the quid pro quo on that 2004, 2005 dialogue was, in addition to you restraining yourself from annexing, we would not support incorporation. And I have never supported incorporation. I'm rethinking that position, and we will be rethinking that position very seriously in response to what's being done here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
I would like to go on record that this is the first time that Don Eslick and I have seen eye to eye on anything.
It is a momentous occasion.
It is, it is, it is a fantastic experience for me. I have the ability and have done a, I have been able to irritate.
I'm sorry, Larry, for the record, your name.
Oh, Larry Newell. I thought you were going to introduce me.
I'm certainly not going to.
You don't want to do that, do you? Okay.
You just, you just took care of that. Carry on.
Larry Newell from Astero. Martha, I appreciate your comments about...
And as I reminded you before, you're just council in its entirety.
I am, I am, I just, I meant, can I do that, or?
You can, I appreciate the comments in general, but please adjust us as a council.
I, I am.
Good, good.
But in terms of her comments about no man's land?
Yeah, but, but...
I happen to live...
We can use your time to debate this, if you'd like.
No, I don't want to do that.
Good, carry on.
Okay. I'm from Fountain Lakes.
There you go.
No man's land frustrates me, all right. I have two things, two items I want to address specifically. specifically. First off, is what you have precipitated to me, well-intentioned perhaps, Stephen, you have precipitated a potential split schism between the communities of Benita and Astero if you continue the annexation process. This goes back, I remember when I, back in 2005, when I think WCI or whatever, had attempted to annex land clear up to Fountain Lakes. In fact, within 70 yards from where my home is. Okay. This, to me, is another repetition of, I've used words provocatively, excessive greed on the part of Benita. I will compromise that statement, because, Ben, I still want to have your friendship. To Bill, on the other hand, you and I have gone back some time on the fire district issue.
Again.
All right. All right, now. They're all interconnected.
I know we are. That's why you should call it council.
All right, council.
There you go.
Council. All right, fine. Excuse me, I'm-
That's quite all right.
I will be 80 years old in a very few days. All right.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Hopefully, I am not senile yet. I feel that if you continue along these lines, you will be making a very substantial mistake and direct it, and I won't use your name either, what has been done with the Benita City Council on economic development, you damn well know I have endorsed 100% from the day you started to do this. I see this potentially being jeopardized by fragmenting off and disenfranchising the whole Astero community if you continue to do this. Now, let me go back to the issue that perhaps is closest to my heart. My entire career has been in health systems planning at the local and national levels. In fact, I was one that was instrumental in the passage of the National Health Planning and Resources Development Act of 1974, going back in time, which incorporated certificate of need, the very program that the State Agency on Healthcare Administration has used. And I'm saying that information that they've used to declare the denial is obsolete, irreverent, irrelevant, and outdated. And for the fact that the governor, now, I think he's kind of out of the picture a little bit, it's between the state now to do something about what I feel to be complete injustice for getting a denial of the hospital for the people in Benita, Astero, and South Lee County. It is a tragic-
Larry, I'm going to give you one more minute to wrap up there and sum up, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead, an extra minute.
Okay. To some extent, this is where I am asking, Benita City Council, ECCL, vote Astero, and the, excuse me, Benita Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, to take my suggestion and go to the governor and go to the Agency on Healthcare Administration now and say, "Check out and redo your thinking on the denial. It is a terrible act that you've done to disenfranchise the people of our communities. Something needs to be done to correct that. You could do this if you will." Not one of you, neither ECCL, vote Astero, Benita City Council, took my recommendation to go after, not after, to go to the governor and to the Agency on Healthcare Administration to stop this nonsense. And unless you do, you're jeopardizing this. I just talked recently, there is no existing interest on the part of Naples Community Hospital and Lee Memorial Health System to sit down and do something about this, either to merge or whatever. I don't know. I really don't give them, you know, as long as South Lee County gets its hospital.
Larry, thank you very much for your comments, sir.
Thanks for listening.
My pleasure. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Ross, and I live in Pelican Landing, in the area that's affected by your vote. And I would like to compliment Steve McIntosh and the councilmen on giving us a chance to decide whether or not we want to be annexed into the city. Before this, I felt disenfranchised. I want to be part of the city, and yet I couldn't even vote in the city election. So I would like to compliment you on giving us the chance. That's all you're doing, as I see it. And I hope to be part of the city of Benita Springs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good morning again, Kathy McGrath. Councilman McIntosh, thank you so much for your comments on Benita Springs Utilities. I happened to be at that meeting, and Senator Richter was not awarded through the refinancing of the bonding. It went to another organization. And yet, he still, he said even more than what Councilman McIntosh said. The glowing things he said about our, the fiscal and the environmental of Benita Springs Utilities. And he said, "Don't worry." He says, "We're going to try again." Now, as a member of the Special Events Committee, Janet already touched on it, 4th of July. You know the firemen do a bang-up job on the parade. There is the 5K run and the bed race, which was such a hoot last year. Do it again. There's going to be a lot of fun things starting at 4:00, including the watermelon, the ice cream, the hot dog. But what I want to touch on, too, is let's not forget the true meaning. If my figures are right, you know, this is Independence Day. And just like a lot of other, I won't say events during the year, we forget the true meaning. And if I add it upright, 1770, it's 237 years since we declared our independence, right? And we're going to try to stress this with the Declaration of Independence being properly displayed, so that people who may not remember about it will. Now, as far as the fireworks show, a few years ago, there was a fireworks laser show that wasn't very popular. And each year, it's gotten a little bit better. And I want to tell you something. This is not our biggest budgeted event, but we try to use local talent. We're going to have Sarah Hadika, if you saw her at the Crew Concert or at the Cancer Relay, she's awesome. And I'm not certain about the others, so I don't want to mention a name. But whatever it is, it's going to be great. We give suggestions, but Patrick Lippi and Laura do a bang-up job of getting our entertainment. So please show up, because the fireworks display this year, we've tried to cut bare bones everywhere else. And we have been, it's been proposed by the company doing it, a three-minute finale that's going to knock your socks off, believe me. So come on out and support us. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else this time? Please come forward. And I just cleared the room. Okay. Counsel, I want to thank you for your hard work. I want to thank staff for their hard work. I do want to add something, though, to the conversation here at the end, because that's why I sit in the center. I get to do stuff like this. This whole process and a lot of the things that have been said about the annexation of the area of Astero, the Astero Community Planning District and that type of thing, I know there's a lot of motion going around there. But I can tell you, from my memory, is that there have always been open communications. We have always tried to be upfront. When we had no intention of doing something, we definitely had no intention of doing something. But as councils change, as times change, as seven, eight years go by, when we have people come up to us and ask us, "We have a piece of property," no matter what that entity is, and they say, "We have a piece of property, and we would like to come into the city of Benita Springs," we are going to give them the due consideration that they deserve. And that is that. And quite frankly, the city of Benita, Lee County, this ECCL, they don't own those properties. They have no special right or claim, nor neither do we, other than people have a right to pick what type of governance they want. And that's all this is all about. We're offering them the chance to have a municipal form of governance that's already established. If they decide not to avail themselves of that, I think that that's fine. That's fine. And a lot of the people with ECCL seem confident that that will happen. If they are confident that that will happen and they won't choose, then there should be no problem with this. On the other hand, if they do desire to, well, then I think that that's fine as well, because I think that we can serve them well. And so far as, again, the voluntary annexations, I don't know who can object to an entity or a person who voluntarily annexes in. It's their property. It's their choice. For anyone to suggest that we should turn them away, oh, no, we can't possibly annex you in because someone might be angry at us that doesn't own your property, well, it's quite frankly, nobody's business except for that property owner's and the person they're making application to. So thank you very much for your diligence, and thank you very much for all your hard work. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.